Good afternoon. It is four thirty PM on Tuesday, May second, two thousand twenty-three. We will call the city council meeting of the city of New Ulm to order. Item number one, consent agenda. Counselors, what are your wishes?
I'll offer a motion to approve. Second?
Motion and a second. Any additional discussion? All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Item number two point one is our public hearing on the proposed two thousand twenty-three surface reconstruction project.
Madam President, say counselors, this public hearing is for the two thousand twenty-three surface reconstruction project that would be performed by the city's street department. The pro- pro- excuse me, the proposed project includes removals and replacement of the existing bituminous servicing in areas where no utility work is planned and minimal subgrade correction is expected. This project was included in the two thousand twenty-three capital improvement program engineering report, which was reviewed and adopted at the November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two city council meeting. That report recommended that the benefit of the surface reconstruction project be specially assessed at the rate of two thousand twenty-five dollars per residential parcel to the benefiting property while assigning an incremental benefit to larger multifamily or non-residential parcels. It'd be my recommendation that we would go through the list of the six project locations, one by one, and hearing comments from the public. To date, I have not received any written correspondence in my off- to my office about this project. Just had two phone calls with general project questions with no objections.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Stadheim. At this time, we will open the public hearing, and what we will do is read each of the proposed construct reconstruction project locations, one by one. If you would like to be heard or have a question, please come up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Location number one, German Street from twelfth South Street to sixteenth South Street.
Madam President, just for full transparency, I want it just on record that I do have a parcel on this segment of roadway. Just so the council is aware.
Thank you. Location number two, State Street from seventeenth North Street to nineteenth North Street. Eighth North Street from Broadway to Washington Street. Seventeenth North Street from Franklin Street to Jefferson Street.
On the back.
Just state your name and address for the record, please.
Jeff Keeker. Address is sixteen twenty-six North Jefferson. And then this gentleman, if I heard right, is the price would be two thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars. Is that correct?
Yes, for a residential parcel.
Is that what I would be, right? Because I'm a residential house.
Yep, you're a residential house. Yep.
And then, um, when is the work going to be done? Because I do use that street all the time.
Sure.
So, I mean, I'm gonna have to park across the street till it's done. Is it gonna take like a week?
Yep, generally, so this work is done by the city's street department. Generally, I'm not sure about seventeenth North. They may do that before the Fourth of July. But generally, the s- the projects are done after the Fourth of July, after they're done with seal coating. And a block segment usually takes them about a week for completion, so.
Is there a way that they can let us know what dates you're looking at, when it gets closer?
Sure, and they usually will send out a notification or stop by and let you know.
Okay.
Or leave us something near door or something like that.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Keeker.
And again, Joe, it was two thousand twenty-five dollars, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, I thought he said two, two thousand. Nope, two thousand twenty-five.
Twenty-five. Yep, sorry. I misheard you.
Nope.
Thank you. Sixth South Street from Broadway to German Street. And lastly, First South from Valley Street to Front Street.
Corey Teal, twenty-five South Valley. I guess we're just asking the council to review the proposal for this resurfacing of First South from Valley to Front Street. The street's in great shape. I don't think there should be a need to resurface. I do believe there are many other streets that could use the attention. I guess that's just my piece on the matter to, uh, just please just kind of reconsider. Take a look at it.
Thank you, Mr. Teal.
Madam President, Mr. Teal, just for the council's information and for your information, that roadway segment was last inspected in, um, last year in two thousand twenty-two. Received a roadway rating of fourteen out of one hundred, with one hundred being brand new. The roadway was seal coated maybe two, three years ago, so that really hides all those defects. The underlying defects are still there, and that seal coat kind of acts as a glue Band-Aid to kind of hold it all together. So it is still our recommendation, even though the, with the seal coat, it hides some of those in those defects, we would still recommend that, but.
I guess, you know, I'm looking potholes, um, major cracks. We've walked the road back and forth and, you know, and invite the council to come down to beautiful Goose Town and take a travel along that road and see what you think.
And I was contacted by two individuals. There's only four parcels on that road, and I had to come up and see the engineer, and that was the answer that he gave me was it was Band-Aided, seal coated, and a couple of years ago. That's how it looked. I don't know if any other cultures went down and looked at the road or not.
I have not. Joe, is that a sick, heavy-duty road, being a truck route?
That segment is not really specified as a truck route, so we get the normal four inches. It's probably only sitting on two to three inches of bituminous right now, anyway. It was originally constructed in nineteen seventy-seven for reference as well.
Joe, in your opinion, how many years of life do you think that road would go yet for that segment?
It, I don't have a good answer for that. It's seal coat, generally, you get five years before it starts re-crumbling and pieces start falling out, but it's generally, you know, the life of the seal coat's five years.
So basically, you're saying it's due, you're trying to be proactive before we get to
Correct.
a worser state?
Correct.
If I'm understanding correctly.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
Hi, Randy Teal, fourteen twenty-five North Payne. Same property. That truck, I'm gonna guess, I don't know the numbers, gets half of the truck traffic that Valley Street gets. They all turn there. All day long, the trucks go down there, and that street is in pretty darn good shape. You drive down Valley Street, some of that stuff is worse than our street. If you go across the tracks from Valley to Minnesota, that I would say is probably in poor condition. So the amount of traffic that we see go by our place, that, that street is in nice shape, and we've been there eighteen years, and I don't remember ever patching potholes or nothing. Seal coating was a couple of years ago, just general maintenance, but I feel that the new blacktop ain't gonna hold up to that truck traffic. That's old stuff. It's there to stay. It, it needs maintenance. I don't disagree there, but I think there's other streets that need attention.
Thank you, Mr. Teal. Uh, counsel, just as a reminder, you know, the surface reconstruction projects are chosen due to areas where we don't have the utility work. We don't need to dig down and do a full reconstruct, so it's really just that surfacing we're redoing. So that's kind of our methodology when we choose the locations, and which we choose is for the street department to do the work is where it requires that minimal subgrade work and utility work. So still, staff would continue to recommend that this one stay on the list.
You said it got a fourteen out of a hundred for a rating?
Yep.
And that's based on what was underneath the seal coating?
Yeah, so that'd be your underlying alligator, block cracking, things of that nature.
So what do we do if we ever, you know, pulled a project because of something like that, where, you know, to take another look, to reevaluate and see, you know, if it's something that we can hold off for one more year? I do realize you already kind of know, you know, what we're gonna be looking at for next year as well, and so, you know, I guess I would be curious as to, you know, how that would work if we wanted to take another look, but.
Madam President, say counselors, during my time here, I don't think that's ever happened, where projects gotten pulled. Ultimately, counsel has the final say in what moves forward and what does not.
The one point I caught, and I also know that, you know, it's not our designated truck route, but I do see semis every day. They take a right and they go right by there, and then boom, they hit Valley Street. Do we know what's there now? Is it four, or I suppose we don't know? Is it a four-inch mat or?
I'm, I'm assuming we're lucky if it's a four. I, I, it'll take me a few minutes, but I can pull it up. It's not gonna let me.
Okay. Well, and I also, you know, do wanna, you know, empower our street department as well, that if they're saying that, that this is something that needs to be done, you know, based on the quality of the road. And in a fourteen, as we all know, what is underneath is a failing road. It's, it's red. It's not yellow. It's not like, you know, so.
Yeah, like I said, I myself, I had to go up to the engineer's office, what's wrong with his road? I mean, I drove it. There wasn't a bump or a pothole or a and then I went up a block up and my tires kabunk, kabunk, kabunk.
Yeah, but who's to say that isn't gonna happen in one more year or two more years or whatnot? If it is slated for it, it's, it's tough to stop. It is something that, I mean, holding off for a year isn't gonna save us anything.
No, the cost will go up to redo it. We know that. Was there anyone else that would care to be heard? The assessment would come through your property taxes, yes. Thank you.
Madam President, just to clarify, so assuming the project moves forward, there would be a second pub- public hearing in the fall after the project's done for the assessments portion of that, then assuming that all moves through, then the bill would go out and the bill would come from Brown County. We certify the assessment amounts to the county and the county bills on the city's behalf. And anything, and the balance that's unpaid from that bill would then go on to your property taxes. So if you do nothing with that bill, the remaining balance will go on to your property taxes payable over ten years at an unknown interest rate, because we haven't bonded for the project yet.
Any other comments?
Found that section. It is four inches of bituminous, so.
And you said it was last done in the seventies?
Seventy-seven.
Nineteen seventy-seven.
Joe, is it typically that we do six projects a year, the street department?
Typically, the street department does twelve blocks per year.
Twelve blocks per year?
Correct.
So. Since I've bonded the council, we've never pulled one, you know, for saying it's still good yet, but yeah, it's a probably a crapshoot if whether the price is gonna go up or not, or in those regards, too. Good question. How, how are they chosen, Joe?
Uh, like, like I explained before, we look at segments that does not have utilities, where we expect minimal subgrade correction and things of that nature, and it's was a rated red street. So I do have historical survey data, so back. So this looks like it would have been in two thousand and six, it was a twenty-nine. Twenty-fourteen, it was a twenty-two. And then that would have been twenty-nineteen, it was a three, and the seal coat gave it a little bit of a bump up to a fourteen in twenty-two. So historically, the road has been in poor shape, going back to about two thousand and six.
That being said, this, you know, whether we do it this year, next year, the, the year after, it's gonna need to get done. The costs of these repairs and products and labor and everything will only increase. You know, it'd be it would make sense to do it. Now to I guess, bring it from a failing road back into a better grade road, you know, considering the truck traffic and everything that's on it. And I support the engineering department's decision and research and information to have this be one of the six projects for this year.
And the one item I had with talking with the city engineer, if, even if I'd say no next year or the following year, it will be at the top, top of the list, and the assessment will be larger. That I can pretty much guarantee.
I guess I agree with the Stadheim's recommendation of it. I guess maybe question whether it could be graded to a heavier road, you know, to last longer. I mean, that was the concern of the property owner, whether it was gonna la- a new road's gonna last as long as this current one with the amount of traffic and, and those needs, but I don't know where that puts the numbers for that, if it's, you know, thicker in capacities.
Madam President, say counselors, that's, I can have that conversation with the street department, but I mean, four inches is what's there. I would imagine four inches put back should have a similar useful life from a new pavement, but that's something we can analyze. It would not affect the assessment amounts, but it would obviously cost the street department more in their budget to make it thicker, so, which is not budgeted, so.
And you said that below, that's a four-inch bituminous layer, and that's what would be replaced as a four-inch?
Yeah, seal coat's just rocks and oil, so that's really the asphalt cement, so bituminous layer, that's that four inches.
And so by similar lifespan, you mean approximately forty years or so?
Typically, new roadways, anywhere from thirty to forty years. Expected useful life.
Thank you.
Just a point of clarification. Prior to seal coating, it was rated a three?
Correct.
So fourteen is a bit misleading in that we're just covering up a, a, a rating of three underneath that fourteen presently, so it sounds like it's pretty tenuous. Would have to be addressed.
Bring up one more comment?
Sure, absolutely.
So this street has zero potholes. I understand the rating thing, and, and I'm not second guessing what your office has said, but there's not been a pothole. We've been down there eighteen years. There's not been a pothole that's been fixed. You know the trucks aren't eighty thousand pounds. When they're hauling grain, they're not eighty thousand. They're not legal loads, and that road has held up to that. You know, I'm guessing some of them trucks are ninety thousand. It, it's not, you know, it's no secret. The garbage trucks, they're heavy, too. That road has held up. We see it every day for eighteen years, and nothing, nothing's happened. Nothing's changed. Yeah, the wear and tear, but no potholes. The, the cracks are there. I have a brand-new street in front of my house that's all cracked already, and that was just done two years ago. So, you know, the blacktop's gonna crack. If there was big potholes and whatnot, I would say go for it, but I think that street will go five more years plus. And then deal with it, you know? There's other streets that I think need attention versus this one, and just looking for something to do, you know, that it's, there's, there's other areas that could use much more attention, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's hard to say on this matter, because I drive that road every day, too, and on my way to work, and it, I understand what they're saying. Aesthetically, it does look and feels like a solid road, but if professionals that do this for a living have studied it and understand it possibly will fail in the next two, three years or less, I I don't know.
What would give it, what, what would it mean to be at zero, or like, what really does a three mean? Like, is it something that is?
Madam President, say counselors.
Safety concern? Like, are there safety concerns?
No, not, not, not necessarily safety concerns. It's really takes into account the type of cracking, the severity of the cracking, and kind of how much of the roadway is covered in that type of cracking, so. Let me see here if I can pull up the No, I can't find it. But, you know, generally, to get down to a level of that type of magnitude, there's probably hundred percent block cracking, hundred percent alligator cracking. Those two distresses are pretty much the, the primary ones we see in town. And then each distress is then rated on a severity, if it's low, medium, or high. Some block cracking is that cracking that you see where it kind of forms perfect squares. And it varies in severity is bigger or less severe, and when it gets down into the small kind of six by six, that's severe cracking. Alligator cracking, there are those kind of random cracks that just form. Those are rated based on, again, the severity is, you know, how far separated are there? How, how many of them, and things of that nature. It's, rating streets isn't an imperfect science. It's really a judgment, judgment, but I think this segment does have the historical data that shows it's a failed section. So I would continue to recommend that the city council move forward with the project.
Thank you, and that's, that's precisely why we have you and your team to put this information together and to evaluate these, and you know, the, the information and the data that we have is showing that underneath, there are definitely issues that I think need to be addressed, and that being said, I support the engineering department and would be in favor of keeping it as a project.
Well, I'll offer the resolution, closing the public hearing, ordering in the two thousand twenty-three surface reconstruction project, and authorize the street department to construct the project.
Second?
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion?
Suppose there's no way to vote?
Council President?
Yes.
Item six.
Sorry for the interruption, Council President.
No, that's okay. Thank you.
Just, I wanted, in the spirit of avoiding any surprises after the vote is taken, to point out that this is the stage in a chapter four twenty-nine project where the vote to order the improvements has to pass by a four-fifths margin of the entire council. And as you have one vacancy today or one absence today, it would mean all four voting members would need to vote in favor of it. And also that, not suggesting you need this time, but if it were an issue, you do have up to six months to take the vote after the date of this public hearing.
Would that give us time to go and look personally at the road? I get, I mean.
We can't, yeah, I think.
I don't know how that affects the bonding, then, if the
If it's not ordered in yet, yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Because the bonds, again, cover more than just the surface reconstruction. It's the whole, all the MSAAS USA projects for the year as well, which have already been ordered. Some of them approved and are moving forward.
Right.
You know, I'll be right up front. I kind of thought that, that it takes the four fifths, and I know when Counselor Schultz comes back, even if I would vote no, it'd be four fifths. So let's do the vote.
Okay. I will say that I, you know, I definitely thank folks for coming and, and, you know, speaking up and coming to the meeting. speaking up and coming to the meeting and, and being heard and that we do, we do appreciate that. That's my comment, I guess. If there's any, nothing else, we'll call for the vote.
I hope the two owners that came, you understand what I said about it would just prolong it two weeks? Where the vote would go four fifths?
All right, if there's no more discussion, Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Wormka?
Yes.
President Becker?
Yes, that motion does carry. Thank you. Item number 3.1, raffles gambling permit for New Ulm Girls Fast Pitch Association.
Motion to approve the issuance of a lawful gambling permit for New Ulm Girls Fast Pitch Association to conduct raffles gambling at the Jefferson Elementary School, 318 South Payne Street on Saturday, June 17th, 2023.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Item number 3.2, off-site pull tabs gambling permit for Mankato Eagles Aerie 269.
I'll offer the resolution approving the issuance of a lawful gambling permit for Mankato Eagles Aerie 269 to conduct off-site pull tabs gambling at Black Frost Distilling, 201 First Street North, New Ulm, on Saturday, May 6, 2023, contingent on receipt of completed application.
Second.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Wormka?
Yes.
And President Becker?
Yes, motion carries. Item number 4.1, 2023 MSAS Improvement Project Contract Award.
Madam President, City Councilors, staff, as previously authorized staff, received an open two bids on Wednesday, April 5th, for the 2023 MSAS Improvement Project. They were read aloud as follows. OMG Midwest, doing business as Minnesota Paving and Materials, MR Paving and Excavating, $1,818,656.74. The low bid from Minnesota Paving and Materials was 8.44% below the engineer's detailed estimate. As this is a state aid and federal aid project, we had a number of certifications that had to take place and we have received clearance from MINDOT to award this project. So we would recommend the contract be awarded to OMG Midwest.
Thank you, Mr. Statheim.
I'll motion to award the contract for the 2023 MSAS Improvement Project to OMG Midwest Incorporated, doing business as Minnesota Paving and Materials in the amount of $1,778,567.45.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion does carry. Under new business, item number 5.1, appointment to Cable Communication Advisory Board.
I'll offer a motion to approve the appointment of Paula Hubbard to the Cable Communication Advisory Board to fill the unexpired term of Pig Sundell.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion does carry. Thank you, Paula, and welcome. Item number 5.2, performance measurement citizen survey results.
Council President and Councilors, before you have the results, the results are pretty much the same as they are every year. We're pretty much in good standing, about a four. Doesn't really increase or decrease, about a .1 difference between, between years. And usually, you know, across the board, kind of the same comments. You know, need to do better job snow plowing, you know, streets are in bad condition, high tax, high utility rates, couple, couple blight comments. So that's kind of where we are. We kind of are always in that four range every single year, with fire department being the highest and streets being the lowest. So it doesn't really change year to year. It would be my recommendation after, because we approve doing it again, to discontinue doing the citizen survey, is the information we get doesn't really change what we do and look at doing it probably every five years instead of every year. So that way we can gauge in spurts how well we're doing in, in, in some of those realms. But this year, we will be having a work-study session on the snow removal process with council so we can show you why we do, how we do the stream, or snow removal, why we do it, the way we do it, to address some of the comments that were, were in there, so you have that, that knowledge.
Thank you.
Sounds good.
Make a motion to receive an order filed for the 2022 Performance Measurement Citizen Survey and authorize results to be submitted to the state of Minnesota to qualify for funding the performance measurement program.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion does carry. Item number 5.3, no-mo May.
Council President and Councilors, this was brought up as a request from President Becker to be on the agenda. We talk about this every year, so this is kind of another opportunity to talk about it. You know, if you would approve this today, then since we don't technically have a program in place for the month of May, we would issue no weed violations for the month of May. And then in June, June 4, technically June 5th, send staff out to make sure everyone's in compliance. It would be my recommendation to hold off one more year. We can have a work-study session, you know, to talk about what that program would look like, to have people come in and pre-register. So if someone calls in a complaint, Mary Honesy would have a list of people that would have register and be like, nope, there are no-mo May, don't need to do anything. And so it would be my recommendation not approve it this year and put together a program if the council wanted to do a no-mo May. I will say, Counselor Schultz did talk to me and he was strongly against no-mo May.
There's a lot of research that's done on both sides. It says good, bad, ugly. More bad and ugly is coming out recently. I mean, Carol Levin just did a whole article about it yesterday about how it does very limited good. I mean, it does good, but adding native species plants to your own garden would do more good than letting dandelions grow in your yard for one month.
I'll go along, I mean, a work session if they want to discuss it further. I mean, not to spend a lot of time. I'll motion to deny the resolution to proclaim May 2023 as no-mo May month.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion?
I support it, come into a work session and go from there.
I would too. I just wanted to get it on because I had some stuff in my inbox about it and want to make sure that, you know, we're being diligent and discussing things. It came in April 26th, which is, got it a little off my radar a little bit late. But, but yeah, I just, I would be fine with taking it to a work session and going from there. Any additional discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
No, it doesn't need a roll.
Oh, deny the resolution. I guess we can move forward. Item number 5.4, Citizens Bank Sign Agreement.
So this is just an amendment or changes to, or update to the current agreement that we have with Citizens Bank operating the sign in our parking lot. The major change is they want to have a fee schedule for businesses and nonprofits with the new software. And there's currently only two people that are trained using the software. It's a little more labor-intensive than it was in the past. So having a small fee helps, helps offset that cost in time.
Well, make a motion to approve the revised contract with Citizens Bank Minnesota for operation of the messaging board for May 1st, 2023 to April 30th, 2028, and authorize city manager to sign the agreement.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion does carry. Item number 5.5, library donations and memorials.
I'll offer the resolution to accept donations and memorials to the New Ulm Public Library for the period January 1 to March 31st, 2023. And I do have the list, this is a little different than the park rec, so if I screw it up, excuse me. Donors, Lee and Kara Knopf, $1,000 cash.
Hundred.
Oh, $100, okay, like I said, $100 cash. Amanda Adler, $58 cash. Derek and Patty Lund, $365 cash. Prairie Peacemakers Quilt, Quilt Guild, $125 in cash. Ruth Copin, $50 in cash. An anonymous donor, $60 in cash. Optimus Club of New Ulm, $1,300 in cash. Genial McCray and Mark Hoffman, $25 in cash. Friends of the New Ulm Public Library, $600 in cash. Friends of the New Ulm Public Library, another $600 in cash. Friends of the New Ulm Public Library, 400 in cash. Friends of the New Ulm Public Library, 200 in cash. Friends of the New Ulm Public Library, 150 in cash. And Friends of the New Ulm Public Library, 150 in cash. Total in cash, $4,058 and a physical donation of 125. That comes to a total of $4,183. I'm just curious, the Friends of the New Ulm Public Library, why they don't group it together?
Because?
Different, different aspects.
Yeah, children's programming books, adult programming, for different things.
All right.
Sure.
Second.
I need a second.
It's on the second, yeah.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Wormka?
Yes.
President Becker?
Yes, that motion carries. Item number 5.6, police department donation.
I'll offer the resolution to accept the monetary donation of $20 from Marion Grunmeier to support National Night Out on July 31, 2023, and future NNO events.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Wormka?
Yes.
President Becker?
Yes, motion carries. Item number 6.1, report, report of claims paid.
Make a motion to accept the list of claims paid in the amount of $1,321,575.55.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion does carry. With no additional business, this meeting is adjourned. We will move into a work session shortly.